Well, good evening, everyone. This is the regularly constituted Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, we're not yet on television.
Oh.
Hang on.
I wonder if the right foot knows what the left is doing.
Recording in progress.
Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. This is the usual and regular meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals this lovely evening of September 26th. As required by General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, the public are able to attend the meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. And as you can see, two of our members are appearing through that access known as Zoom, okay? But that still constitutes a fully established board. Members of the public may watch the meeting live on Channel 18 or to watch and/or participate in the meeting hosted in Zoom. The meeting notice provides necessary instructions to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be disabled for all attendees. You may request to participate by using the raise hand function. We will call a list of members present and intending to vote. Sean Igoe?
Present.
Jay Frapery?
Present.
Barbara Murphy?
Present.
Dick Martin?
Present.
And I, Steve DeYoung, am present. So now we have a fully established quorum, and we're going to get right to the meeting, with the first matter being that of 5129, that petition, 5129, of Martin J. Dougal, property located at 41 Standish Way, West Yarmouth, Mass. That property is located in a beach, excuse me, in an R-25 zoning district, and our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 407.5.2, Subparagraph 3, to convert an affordable housing apartment into a rental accessory apartment. Sir, tell us who you are and what your relationship to the petitioner is.
Sure. My name is Martin Dougal. I am the petitioner.
Okay.
One of the owners of 41 Standish Way. In 2015, I received a special permit to construct an affordable accessory apartment, so that is existing, and my request today is to convert it to a rental accessory apartment.
Right. That's pretty succinct. Let's see if any board members have any questions of you. Ms. Murphy?
Um, no, not any questions at this time.
Mr. Martin?
Let's see. So the apartment was built back then as supposedly as an accessory apartment. Have you ever, have you been living there?
In the accessory apartment?
No, in the main house.
No, my parents.
Friends do. Okay, because I think that's a problem with both what exists now and what you intend to do. Both require that the main house be occupied, the new one at least year round.
To Belona. I think both year round.
We're co-owners. They're on the deed.
Co-owners. Who is the co-owner?
Myself, my father, and my mother. We're all.
Does your father and your mother live there?
Yes. Those are primary residents. That has not changed.
Okay. And they live there year round?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that was one of my biggest, biggest concerns. I'm, I've been one that's not been thrilled about the change of the bylaw to allow market rate rentals, because essentially what we're doing is allowing every house on a quarter acre lot in town to potentially become a duplex, and I'm too thrilled with that. How big is your lot there?
Roughly half an acre.
All right, that's all I have for now.
So how about you, Mr. Frapery? Any questions?
I'm just, just looking at the, that mansion, Martin Dougal and, sorry if I spelled it wrong, GM and MM Dougal. Is that your, are those your?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're coming in and out, but Gerald and Margaret Dougal, correct.
Okay. Yeah, it just says GM and MM. Um, all right. I don't really have any other questions. I think that, I'm assuming that most of the same requirements that we've got today in the new accessory apartment, you read, you feel that you cover all of them. The big one, the big one is the year-round residency of the, of, and do you have, how many, how many parking spaces for that facility at the house?
Four.
You do have room for four cars?
Yes. Plus garage.
Well, what?
I said plus garage.
Yeah, I don't have any other.
All right. How about Mr. Igoe there? Do you have any questions of our petitioner?
I do. Do you have a deed that, can you furnish this board with a deed that shows that your parents are on the deed?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
You can, so that.
I'm looking at a deed registered at Barnstable on 2/22/13. Margaret M. Dougal is your mother?
Correct.
Okay. So Martin Dougal and his mom are on the deed.
That's fine with me. That's, that's sufficient for me. Okay. Well, I think the, I think the one issue that all of us had was whether the owner was living there, because that's a requirement, and it appears that the owner is. We did grant an affordable apartment, I believe, on this a few years back, what, 2015?
Correct.
They met the requirements under 407 of the time. I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been on this board too long. I see that I was chairman back then. So anyway, listen, I want to echo Mr. Martin's commentary. We have to apply the law of the land, which is the most recent change to the zoning bylaws. I'm not a fan of them at all. I think what we're going to do is exactly what we're seeing here, a very small lot we're making into a two-family home, and it's the people that are living in the second home or the second dwelling on the unit unfortunately have no vested interest in making sure it's going to be well-maintained, other than that they're renters. And, you know, that's why the accessory apartments were so wonderful, to assure that the family member that lived there would be policing the care of the property. But that's all I'm going to say. I have no questions, and I'm now going to read into the record a few things. Forgive me, just be patient. Dear members, the owner of the property of 33 Standish Way, West Yarmouth, I am the butter to the property of 41 Standish Way, excuse me, for which Mr. Dougal seeks a special permit pursuant to 407.5.2, Subparagraph 3, and of the zoning board, zoning bylaws, to convert an affordable accessory apartment into a renters' accessory apartment. I am opposed to the grant of the special permit. First, it appears that the petitioner does not satisfy the requirements for issuance of a special permit, because the property is not the owner's principal residence. As set forth in the submission made by the building commission, Mark Gorillis petitioner resides at 830, oh, I got you, East Streets in Boston. The same property is lived at when he bought 41 Standish Way in 2013. I also note that the phone number entered in the hearing application includes a New Hampshire area code 603. Second, it is not clear that from the petition, in supporting materials, whether the accessory apartment has two means of egress as required by Sections 403.3, 407.3, Subparagraph 4. Does it?
Yes, it does.
Would you describe it to us, please?
Yeah, sure. There is, the principal entrance is at the front of the house, stairs, the apartment is above the garage, and the second means of egress is there's a deck on the opposite side of the house that has a sliding door and stairs from the deck down to below.
Is there anything interrupting the flow from the front door to the apartment above the garage? Nothing impeding their access? Okay. All right.
By the way, that, the addresses that was listed there, that's my address. The 823, you sir.
Yeah, I think, I think this gentleman, John Allen, understood too. I also note that the phone number entered on the housing application includes a New Hampshire area code. Second, it is not clear from the petition and supporting materials whether the accessory apartment has two means of egress. Third, while I recognize the community benefit of affordable accessory apartments in providing living arrangements for people whose financial situation limits their choice of housing, allowing a market-rate apartment in a single-family residential district does not produce the same community benefit. Permitting an affordable accessory apartment to become an accessory apartment simply gives the owner the change, the ability to change a higher rent, charge, a higher rent for his apartment, which is a personal benefit to the owner without any community benefit. Based on the foregoing, I respectfully request that the petition be denied. On that note, again, we didn't author, we didn't, weren't asked to chime in, I guess maybe we were asked to chime in, but we didn't participate in chiming in. From this board to the town meetings, consideration and passing of this bylaw, we are merely instructed to uphold it. And so, as, as, again, I've said to you, and I hear Mr. Martin agreeing, which is that, while we might not like it, it's there, and if anybody wishes to change it, they need to go back to town meeting and ask for a, a new vote, or ask for a new bylaw, that it rescinds this. So I regret it, but it's here. All right. So from Mark Gorillis, who is, as everybody knows, our building commissioner, find me, and if you haven't met him, please go try and meet him. It's a good guy. He says, "The HM and DeYoung, Section 407 of the zoning bylaw contains specific requirements for the creation of an accessory apartment. It appears that the requirement for the principal dwelling be owned, owner occupied as required by Section 407.3, Paragraph 11, is not met as indicated by the most recent field card printed from the assessing department webpage which is attached. Previous editions of the zoning bylaw also contain this requirement. Condition number six, in the March 2015 decision 4577, stated the following: Six, the owner shall comply with all rules and regulations related to accessory, affordable accessory apartments." Please let me know if you have any questions. So the field card lists Martin and GM and MM Dougal, again, your parents, and so if there is a decision favorable to you this evening, it's going to state that this, this relief was granted on a representation by you as to their residency in that home, okay? Town of Yarmouth Housing and Space Use bylaw, I'm not going to go into that. I don't know why that's here. Declaration of covenants, affordable accessory apartment. You've declared previously that you are the owner of the property, and even though you've signed it, I guess it's your mother, or father, that should really have signed it. And then, of course, our decision 4577 back in March of 2015. So that's all that the board has to consider at this point, except for any input from the audience. So anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition, please come to the microphone, tell us who you are, and we'll hear you. Oh, it's not a cattle herd stampede there, is it? All right. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, raise your mic, your hand, and proceed to the mic. Seeing none. We now close it to the public's input to the petition and open it up to board discussions and deliberations. And with that, I'll start with you, Mr. Igoe, again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think after the testimony of the petitioner applying the criteria of the bylaw, I think the petitioner meets the criteria under Section 407. As such, I'd like to make a motion that we approve petition as requested without conditions.
Okay. Could you consider that there be a statement specifically identifying the representation made by the, by the?
Yes. And I.
I don't require you to do anything. I just want it on that record, that's all.
What, what I'd also like to do is have the petitioner fill out, have his parents fill out an affidavit and submit it as they being the principal owners, principal occupiers of the property.
Okay. Good enough.
Full to ask that a copy of their driver's license with the address also be, some, some, some definition in their town residence.
Yep.
Your parents still licensed to drive?
One of two is, yeah.
One.
Come to a certain age where your wife says, get rid of that license of yours. I'm almost there. So, listen, here's the deal. That would be nice. I don't know that we can compel you to do that, but that certainly would be helpful to assume and assure, rather, to assure what we're assuming here, which is your integrity on the issue. Not to say you're not a man deserving of that, but it's just, we've been burned before.
I understand.
Ms. Murphy?
Are the utilities in your parents' names or in your name?
They're in my name.
Your name, okay. Anything else in their names as far as this property? Property taxes go to you?
Goes, goes to both.
Goes to both?
That's in both.
The property taxes bill goes to both of you? Both you and your parents?
I feel like there's more than one name on it. I could be wrong.
You're, the address on there, so it probably goes to you.
Okay.
All right. No, no more questions.
Okay. And Ms. Martin?
No, I didn't have anything else.
Nor do I. So if the board is prepared to make follow-up on Mr. Igoe's motion, that would be to approve the petition without condition. Let's draw, see if we have a second for that.
Second.
Mr. Martin, second?
Yep.
Does the board care to have any discussion before moving along to a vote? Hearing none. Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igoe?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that carries five to zero. A decision will be drafted. It will be filed with the town clerk's office. Twenty days must elapse after that has been filed. You then take the, the document, you bring it to the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, you record it and return proof that you've recorded it back to our incredible office administrator. Okay?
Thank you for talking.
The brains of our operation, I want you to know that. And so, to satisfy the file, that is a requirement, okay? And once you've done that, then you're good to go. All right? Thank you. Nice to see you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you too.
What's today's date, everybody?
26.
26.
Thank you. That moves us right along to the next matter. That is petition 5131, NCI Auto, Inc., with property located at 770 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. That property is in a zoning district B1, B2. Applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 202.5 for H4 use and/or a variance from 301.4.6 and 303.5.2 to construct a 9,991 square-foot building for a Nissan dealership to include sales and service while parking, vehicle inventory storage, landscaping, and signs. I know the, the face of the two of you, so let's start with you, sir. What is your name?
For the record, my name is Andrew Singer. I'm an attorney in Dennisport, here on behalf of the gentleman sitting next to me.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members, members of the public. My name is Stephen Sewell. I am the president of the proposed Nissan dealership that's going up. You may also remember me from, I own the Cape and Islands Kia, which I'm happy to report as a successful boomin.
Is that why Mr., that guy, Teddy Zambalis, is back there?
Yeah, we got that Teddy back in the third.
He's on the, the club?
Yeah, okay. Yes, we're also joined by.
Good to see you, Mr. Zambalis.
Good to see you, too.
We're also joined by Andrew, that knows a lot more about the technical stuff than I do. I can sell cars with the best of them, but that's about it. And we have my builder's concern here behind me, and also Civil Engineering Company, to answer all your questions if we can.
Hopefully.
Let's go right ahead.
I'm going to let Andrew kind of take it from here, because again, he's the brains of the operation. I'm the sales guy.
You, where you want to do it, it's your dime.
I'm not a sales guy, so I'll talk about the zoning stuff. And any of us here at the table, or as Stephen said, in the first row behind me, any questions that you might have online or here, we'll get it to the correct person to answer. We appreciate your time this evening. NCI Auto, Inc. is a tenant of this property, and the property today has two existing curb cuts on Route 28, contains just under 15,000 square feet of disturbed land. It's been used for miscellaneous parking and other uses over the year, but this is the first time, I think it's been before you, for a full onsite, you know, full redevelopment proposal for the property. The, as noted in the legal ad, proposing a 9,991 square-foot auto sales and service building and 14,503 square feet of automobile inventory storage behind the building in a, in a storage area. The project requires a special permit for an H4 auto sales and accessory service use in this zone, and potentially a variance relief that I'll discuss, as was noted in the legal ad. In order to grant the special permit for the H4 auto use, the board must make a finding that the proposal will not create any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion, and that there will be no substantial harm to the established or future character of the town or the neighborhood. The applicant respectfully submits that the proposed redevelopment satisfies each of these criteria and will be a benefit to the neighborhood and the town for a number of reasons. First, the property is located in a commercial zone, among other commercial uses, on a main road. The applicant, as Stephen alluded to, has many years' experience operating similar uses, including the Kia next door, and he has a proven track record of providing high-quality service to residents of Cape Cod. There will be a reduction of the two curb cuts down to one, as you can see on the plan, so the two which are on the outside will be consolidated into one curb cut in the center of, of the property. Will ultimately have to go to MassDOT for revision to the curb cut permit, but you can't do that until you get all your local permits. There is going to be significant landscape buffers to either side of the entrance driveway and then down the side of the property. There is also going to be, the building is 89.1 feet back from Route 28, and all of the parking complies with the bylaw that there can be no parking in front of a building. And I will tell you, that was a little bit of a hard nut for an auto salesman dealership to, to like, because they like to have their cars up front. But that's not going to be the case on this property. So this 100% complies with the requirement that all parking be to the side and rear of the building. There will be a conforming number of parking spaces as well. In addition, in the parking lot for, which is going to be used by customers and employees, it meets the requirement of one tree, in-lot tree, per eight parking spaces in the open area. We are not, and this was in my summary of reasoning, we are not proposing any trees in the inventory storage area, and I will discuss that a little bit more. It was a question that came up when we were talking with Mr. Grills during site plan review. That is not part of the conventional parking area for the business. It is going to be inventory storage, but I will discuss that, just so you know, that is, that was the question for where there would be no trees. Everywhere else on the property, from there forward to the street, all the in-lot trees that are required are being proposed. The building itself will conform to all setbacks, so it's meeting front, side, and rear setbacks. It is also going to be only 28 feet tall to the, to the, to the flat roof, so to that roof. With respect to height.
Need room down here?
Yeah. All right, you're going to have to spread out a little. We gave you the smaller plans, but those are hard to read, so.
Big enough, yeah.
Yeah, they're big enough, okay. With respect to the height, this is something that is not a plan before you. You have the elevations for the building. Just today, the applicant's team was having a meeting with the senior execs at Nissan's design team, and that design team actually expressed a preference for a proportionate reduction in the height of the building. They actually thought that instead of 28 feet, 24 feet might be better. And so, because of this, if the board would so entertain in an approval this evening, we would ask if you would reflect in a decision that the applicant may reduce the height of the building, which is already conforming, it's well under the maximum allowed, but may reduce the height of the building further, and submit copies of such elevation plans to the building and zoning departments after, as part of this special permit, so we wouldn't have to come back.
As you know, the, if you're seeking relief that exceeds what you had noticed the public on, but if you're looking to reduce the non-conformity, by all means, there's no problem with that.
Okay. In this case, it'd be.
What's the problem with a 24-foot?
It'd be reducing a conformity even in this case, so, but, well, if that, and we can discuss that, I just wanted to put that as part of our presentation, appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. But yes, in case they would like to do that, and they just have to have some more meetings, then that would be the request. I don't think anyone's going to notice it, you know, on a building this size, four feet, 89 feet back from the road. I don't think it's going to be evidenced either way.
What is the Kia dealership height?
Roy, perhaps you could help me with that? What'd you say? 30 feet, maybe? I'd say it's probably about 30 feet. It would be my best.
And how far back is that from the road?
Oh, further, much further back.
Okay. Thank you.
Building coverage on this new lot is going to be only 8%, so it's well under the 25% that's allowed. Impervious site coverage is going to be 48%, also well under the 70% allowed. So this site is going to not be maxed out in terms of, of impervious coverage or building. Site lighting will comply with all lighting requirements, as shown on a photometric plan. They're proposing a sidewalk to tie into the existing sidewalk along Route 28 out front. As for landscaping, the applicant agreed during site plan review, as I noted, to redesign the front of the driveway to provide these larger landscape beds. At the beginning, there wasn't going to be quite so much, but site plan review asked for more, and Mr. Sewell agreed, and so that's why you have these very significant landscape beds. And as you can see on the landscape plan, there are numerous plants, shrubs, and trees proposed. For the ground cover that's in between the plants, shrubs, and trees, what the applicant is requesting is a, or is proposing with your approval, would be a mix of ground cover to consist of both grass or turf and earthy colored stones, and that is something that is actually next door. You know, so it's something that is a little bit easier in parts to maintain, but it's a mix of green, so you get the grass in there, but you also get, where it's appropriate, some stones. And that would be on the ground cover in between all of the plants, shrubs, and trees. That would be a request from the applicant for your consideration. We would submit that there's going to be no negative impact to drainage, septic, or stormwater. The property will connect to the new town sewer when available, and in fact, if you drove down Route 28 today, the property was right where the detour was today, where they were putting in pipe, so you couldn't go on further. That being said, until that time, there'll be.
They'll go to my house anytime soon.
Yeah, maybe not.
I don't want the betterment.
Well, that's true, or the disruption temporarily. As far as the other permits, the Yarmouth Conservation Commission has reviewed this plan. They have approved both an order of conditions, because there are some wetlands to the back, to the north, and then to the northeast, and they also approved the stormwater permit. So those two permits have been issued. We have them in hand for recording with the Registry of Deeds. And finally, for the special permit, the proposal will be in keeping and compatible with the character of the neighborhood, and we submit will be an asset to the town. Now, that's the special permit, and there were three areas where we potentially need some alternative relief by variance, or we may not need that relief, and I wanted to discuss those with you. The first, we've already mentioned, which is the in-lot tree. The first, we've already mentioned, which is the in-lot tree requirement for the back storage area. This was a discussion at, at site plan review because if the inventory here was beach chairs, you know, or some other kind of inventory for a retail store, we wouldn't be having this conversation because they'd be in a, in a storage area, and that would be what it is. In this case, the storage area is gonna have, be cars, and the cars are gonna be put in there, but they're gonna be put in there, as you can see on the plan, the idea is to put them in to store them. That is where they would be taken from when, when necessary. In this particular case, requiring in-lot trees in the back storage area itself is a significant hardship, both financial and practical, and, and maybe more so practically, is that it would likely render the project infeasible because there would be no, there wouldn't be a sufficient space to store the cars that are needed for the, for the inventory for the business itself. What, what Mr. Sewell's proposing here is compressing the storage area down as you see on the plan, and that's allowing the area to stay fifty or more feet from the wetland to the northeast, more than a hundred feet from the wetland to the north, and it allows that site coverage, much more of the property, again, more than fifty percent of the lot is going to remain in its natural state. And so to the extent, and, and again, I don't believe that that storage area as a storage area needs relief, but to the extent that you felt it did, we would respectfully submit that it would meet the variance criteria because there is a hardship. But I would ask you to determine that it's a storage area, as we think it is, and does not need in-lot trees back there. There are trees, as I said, all up the, you know, the property sides are completely conforming on trees. In-lot trees within the main parking area, behind to the sides, to the building are completely conforming. The other areas for discussion are signage. And I wanted to hold this, I submitted this, so if you have this, so the, the top right, this, this was the Nissan, the signs they offer, you know, that they, that they do typically. So on the top right, and I did a asterisk there, that is the proposed monument sign for the business. And that sign would only be nine feet, three and three quarters inches. So it is, you know, well under the twelve feet by height that you can allow, just for comparison purposes, for height only. If you're familiar with the Kia sign next door, that monument sign, that's ten feet tall. So just to give you some comparison, this would be about three inches, two or three inches, I'm sorry, two or three, two and a half feet, wait, sorry. Two and a half feet below the, what's allowed at twelve feet, it would be about seven inches below the Kia sign, just for frame of reference. However, it is a little bit wider, and so that sign is, would require relief. It's at forty-two point five-two square feet, which is larger than generally allowed at twenty-four feet. However, we do suggest that it is in keeping with the neighborhood and also with the size of a property and the scale of a building, so that it'll, it'll look consistent as you're driving down the street. The other request for relief is on the building itself, and you have the, if you, the second page of that colored handout that I gave you, on the, on the left-hand side, you can see the Nissan logo, and the third page has the letters for Cape and Islands and Nissan. Now, the letters are conforming, they're not greater than two feet in height. They, the logo, the, the size, if you add up the Nissan side, now, this is where it gets a little tricky, business Cape Cod Nissan, so we, we had proposed that Nissan on the right-hand side. If that is something the board felt was more than they wanted, that could be dropped and you could leave Cape and Islands on the left and Nissan logo in the middle, which, which would match, it would be similar to what's next door at the Kia. There's a logo in the center of the building and then there's the words Cape and Islands. Yes, thank you. So, so that is something here to discuss. We did not, the letters were kept to be no more than the two feet, but at the moment, with the word Nissan, it is greater than one-third of the running face of the building. Also, this is a quirky situation, you can have two signs for the business, but only if they were on perpendicular walls, and clearly these aren't perpendicular. So the name of the business is Cape and Islands Nissan. If we get rid of the word Nissan, you have Cape and Islands, and then you have the logo. So we'd suggest that that's effectively one sign, but they are separated a little bit, just like at the Kia dealership. So that's something, obviously, we look, you know, look forward to speaking with you, you know, about.
I say potato, you say potato, right?
Very potentially. That, that is the presentation, the building itself, or the site design itself, everything conforms with the potential exception of that question on the rear storage area, and then the question of signs to discuss. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks. And before we go to the members, I just have a question for you.
Sure.
Do you have any definitive list of relief you need?
Of the relief?
Do you have any definitive list?
Yes.
Of the relief you need?
I can tell you the relief that we've applied for.
No, I don't want you to tell me, I'm asking, is there a written list?
It's in the summary of reasoning, yeah, and it's in the application.
Okay.
Yes, I can pull that out.
Well, it certainly isn't on page two, right? So where, where would it be? Where would it be that I can read it? As numbered relief needed?
All right.
You want a copy of it?
No, I have a copy of the application. I did have a copy of the application. Bear with me, I was looking at it right before the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
It's on the petition, you say?
Yeah, on the face of the petition.
What are you reasoning?
It's on the face of the petition.
All right.
So what it was, I can tell you what it is, it's H4 special permit.
No, you, no, we don't need to, I just wanted to know if you had a list of it.
Oh.
Because you're telling us on the one guise that you don't believe you need relief, but you want us to grant relief. Well, we're not gonna grant relief to you for things that you don't need.
Correct. So what I put on the, on the application in discussion with, with Dolores is I put the potential request for relief from sections three oh one point four point six, three oh three point five point four point one, and three oh three point five point five point one and point two.
Thank you. Okay, so, Mr. Frapery, do you have questions about petition or?
Yes, I mean, personally, I'd, I'd like to see it consistent with the facility next door, which is two signs on the building. I think that's a reasonable approach. I'm not sure which two you'd like, but if you want the logo and Cape Islands, that seems the proper one. Also, that logo right now, the way it's been set up, it looks like it, it goes above the top of the building, and I think that's also something that's in the bylaw not to happen, if I remember correctly.
I can address that, but I'll wait till, unless you want me to address it now, Mr. Frapery.
I can address that as I go, if you would.
So now, oh, okay. Yes, I did address that, and I forgot to mention that, it's in my summary, I apologize. If you look at page two of the colored, the colored sign plans, on the second, it's actually page three, the second page, but it's numbered page three, on the left, where I asterisk, the, there is a small architectural element to which the sign is affixed, which extends thirteen point seven-six inches above the roof of the building in that one small area. So the building itself is either twenty-four or twenty-eight feet, and that one section that is, where, has that architectural treatment that goes thirteen point seven-six inches. It's not the sign. You're correct, signs cannot extend above the, the ridge line of the building. What this is, in this case, is the architectural element to which the sign, the logo sign is being affixed. So that is why I did not believe, I mentioned it in my summary on page four, but I don't believe it needs relief as, under the relief we were discussing before.
All right, Mr. Frapery, anything else?
Still, still going. So you're, you're basically saying that's part of the structure, not part of the, not part of the sign?
Correct.
Just how tall is the building, including that, as above the, the top of the?
As shown right now, the building is twenty-eight feet. This is thirteen point seven-six inches, so it is twenty-nine feet, one and three-quarter inches in that one place where the architectural element goes above the building, it's about nine feet, but the rest of the building would be the twenty-eight feet at the moment.
The other thing I have is I have a concern about trying to exceed the twenty-four feet for a sign, but I'll listen to what other staff are. But I do think two signs is a reasonable approach on the signs. I think the H4 is fine, obviously, it's right next door also, I think it works out as far as I'm concerned. And the trees, the, the trees on the side, the side parking is, I think, is vital for, for visuals, but in the back, I'd be willing to discuss that.
Thank you. Mr. Igo, please.
Yes, I heard you mention that, I, I reviewed your landscape plan and it looks woefully inadequate. It does have a list of shrubbery on it, but it has nothing other than that. When we talk about ground cover, I know there was a mention in one of your footnotes somewhere about planting grass. I would like to see grass there. Now you're coming in and saying it's going to be a mixture of grass and stone and other jurit and, I don't know what other coverings you're at. I wouldn't really feel comfortable approving this tonight without a more definitive landscape plan, because I think that's very important. So if you'd like to make some representations to ally my concerns, I'd be certain, certainly happy to listen to them.
Again, now, Mr. Igo? I'm happy to. And listen, Mr. Martin, did you want to say something before I speak?
No, just that there, it seems to be trees on the plan to me, yep.
Yes, so, so as far as the landscaping that you just raised, if you look at sheets three of ten, four of ten, I mean, there is significant.
I have, I have what you have called the landscape plan. I see a list of shrubbery and I see a number of trees. I don't see any ground cover on there.
No, 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 that, and, yeah, I, so, so as far as the ground cover, so I think, I think there is a detailed list of the shrubs, plants and trees, but as far as the ground cover, what I had suggested was a mixture of grass and stones, not dirt or mulch. However, if you would like it to be grass, you know, we can, we can agree that the ground cover amongst the shrubs, plants and trees will be grass. Or we would request permission, grass or turf, because these days turf can be extremely, it looks really good, and sometimes it's even better environmentally. So, Mr. Igo, what we would request at that point is that the ground cover be grass or turf.
Now, I'm not sure what you mean by turf. I want it to look nice, you know, your building, let, let, let me tell you where I'm coming from. We're redeveloping Route 28. I want it to look nice. Grass looks nice. It's why golf courses look nice. So you're coming in with a multimillion dollar project here. I don't think it's gonna be, gonna kill you financially to plant grass and make it look nice, do you?
Grass it is.
Okay, that'd be great. I see the Board of Health requested that you supply a list of fluids that you're going to be using in your service area. Has that been provided to the Board of Health yet?
Probably not yet, but it will be, and if that, wanna make that as a condition of an approval, absolutely, you know.
I would like to make that a, a condition of.
When can you get to the Board of Health? I mean, I, I, there's so much that we're being asked to consider approving tonight, but will be done in the future to allay our concerns. And one of them has always been, particularly in this area, with, with the water courses behind it, ground, ground.
Well, we're complying, we don't, this is not the APD and in, in the SEPT.
No, it's not the APD, but we're concerned about it.
Everything complies. Oh, absolutely, but every, everything complies, I don't think we need a separate permit from the Board of Health, they just asked for that list to be put on file during site plan review.
And we have a book on file that we keep as well.
And, and Mr. Sewell's saying they have a book with all that for next door, and they would be similar, so, yeah, no, there were no, there's no, I understand what you're saying, Mr. DeYoung, and when we need a permit from the Board of Health, we do go and get that and get health comments, but in this case, no permits are needed. But as, as Mr. Igo mentioned, you, that was a request just for the file at site plan review, and we're happy to do it.
Is the car washing going to be performed on the premises?
No car wash on site.
So I'd want to see that in a decision, that there's no car washing to be conducted on the spot.
Okay.
On the attached signs on the building, I, I tend to agree with Jay. I, I could go with two on the, on the front. The piece that goes over the roof, that, that, I, I think I might agree that that's more of an architectural addition than a sign itself. So, I mean, I, I could live with that one. Let's see, your ten-foot buffer along the westerly side appears incomplete. Can you speak to that? This is on the site plan review comment sheets on that westerly side?
Yes, there was a request, I think, during site plan review to add, it was one or more trees on the west side, and, and they were added as, they, they have been added, so that's complying.
Okay, okay. Good idea. My, my personal opinion with the monument sign, I, I think it would look fine as proposed. I, I understand we're giving some variance relief there, but I do think we need some give and take. I mean, we are dealing with a national brand here, and I think what they proposed is very tastefully done, as it has been next door to Keaton dealership. I think the Kia dealership looks very nice, by the way, they did a great job over there. I'm sure this one's gonna be great, too. That's all I think I have for now, let me just take one quick look at my notes here.
Thank you.
That, that's it for now, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Barbara?
Just wanna go back again to the trees along the back of the lot. Why is that a hardship?
The, if you, so if you look at the, the site plan and we're talking, the area we're talking about is the inventory storage area in the back, so.
Yeah.
All the other in-lot trees are there, no issues. The concern here is that the, that's been designed in such a way that you can park, because you can't have cars in front of the building, all the inventory has to be put behind the building, and so what they'd like to do, you know, is not put them space, 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 they'd like to, you know, it's like a valet lot, you know, where you have all your inventory stored close together. If we have to start separating that out with in-lot trees like a parking lot, then all of a sudden, you're gonna lose the ability to stack the cars for inventory storage, and you'd have to, if you still needed the same number of cars to make the business viable, you'd have to expand further out, and we're trying to stay as far away from the wetlands as possible and also keep that impervious coverage down.
And that's all?
Mr. Martin?
Yeah, just that, I know there's, it, it, on the plan, it says existing trees of this four-inch caliber shall remain. I know in the front right-hand corner, there is at least one large tree there, which was in the buffer zone and doesn't show on the landscape plan as being retained, and it should be. So, because that's a, you know, that's a big mature tree that would be good, good to keep. The only other thing I had was, any consideration given to where it's, we have Cape and Islands and Nissan in the front of the building, Nissan's way pushed over to the right, can that be centered better? On the building? On the building, the Nissan word or lettering appears to be pushed way over to the right.
Well, yeah, well, that word Nissan, I think, is gonna, is gone, because listening to Mr. Frapery and Mr. Igo, and probably, they, they, I think, and I won't put words in anyone's mouth, but, you know, and, and this, and Mr. Sewell's okay with that, we could, the words Nissan to that right-hand side, Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Could leave, you know, we could, we can tell you, we could remove them, that, we, we would draw that part of the request.
You're doing anyways, okay.
And what you'd have is the Cape and Islands and the logo.
That covers it. That's all I have.
I'm gonna tell you right now, I need to see a more defined landscape plan. I need to see an actual depiction of what the signs that you're proposing will look like along, on the building, a rendering, not, not seeing as it's been presented. I wanna see the building with the signs that you're proposing to be in the locations you're proposing them for.
This plan.
In a version like this, in a colored version. I mean, it, this isn't hard, you know, I, I can go on my, you know, computer and do it, probably takes two minutes.
In color, no, but there is one that's exactly the scale.
I just wanna see exactly where they are. We've heard various things that they may be there, they may.
It's just not in color, Mr. DeYoung, but this is the plan. All we would be doing is adding color to this plan. This is a scaled plan.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Do that. Okay? You, you're not gonna get a vote, a positive vote from me tonight without certain things being done. The next item is that I wanna see a comprehensive list of only that. The next item is that I want to see a comprehensive list of only that relief you are seeking. I don't need to have rationales. I don't need any of that. What I need is a comprehensive list that says, I want relief under 407.3.2, you know, whatever. I just want to see it in black and white and I don't see that. It's not a portion of the petition per se. I want you to just tell me what needs it and not rationale. I don't care about rationale. I'll work that rationale out myself. And you've done an amazing job of presenting this petition, as far as I am concerned. As always, the product that we receive from this owner of property in Yana is done well and it's done usually with absolute detail and provides us with very little to consider other than is the vote yea and aye. So, just a couple of things. You can come here next meeting, okay?
Well, in a way we can. I can't. I will not be here.
Come play Zoom.
I am going to be in Asia. I'm not, unfortunately going to be able to zoom into that meeting.
Did you say you're gonna be in Jamaica?
Asia.
Asia. I guess that's more important than us.
Well, if it's more, well, yeah, okay, it's more important.
Well, you're really. I'll be in Florida, should I not?
Right red here.
I'll be in Florida, should I not attend?
Well, no, Mr. Igo's in Florida and I don't know where Mr. Frapery is, but no, no, you can zoom in for that. Listen, if I could zoom in, I would.
Yeah, I know, I know. Look, you're nothing but prestigious and professional in your presentations on every topic you present on. And I applaud you again for a very fine presentation. And as far as I can see, given the, while I'm looking for a couple of minor things, a better plan, a better landscape plan and a list, a comprehensive list of what it is you want for relief. I don't need rationale. Give us those three things and I'm gonna tell you, if I receive them and they're as you represent, I'm, they'll be incorporated as conditions to the decision if that's required. And if they're not, then we don't, won't bother with them. We'll just follow what you presented. But at the end of the day, I'll tell you that I'm very much in favor of the petition, okay? So, don't misread anything I've said here tonight. I just think we need to have a clean file. And in two weeks, I'm sorry, but this has been in the planning stages for a long time, I'm sure. Two weeks isn't gonna hurt anybody.
Except.
Maybe Mr. Zambellas who had to drag himself away from his restaurant this evening.
Well, no, it's just I'm gonna have to find coverage for Mr. Sewell to come back.
You want to go to another meeting, then? Doesn't matter.
Oh, no, 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 no. He's, time is of the essence. I just, so I have a question, a couple, if I could, in response, Mr. Chairman, because I do need some guidance. I can give you a list, I mean, I believe I've given it to you already, but I can, we can give you another list of the relief, but the question about in-lot trees and the inventory storage area, do we need that relief? Because if we do, I'll put it on the list, but if we don't, I won't. That's 301.4.6.
I personally don't think you need it in the back. I just would like to see a better plan of what you're putting out front. When you said to me, colored stone, you know, that, ooh, that just kind of raised my cockles.
I said earthy colors.
What is that?
Okay, actually, I beg to disagree. I think you do need the relief.
I think you do need the relief on the spaces because the bylaws written just in terms of numbers of parking spaces and those are in parking spaces of one sort or another.
But it is a storage area. I mean, if it wasn't, if cars weren't the inventory, and if you'd agree as well, then they certainly wouldn't require relief, right? It just happens to be the inventory.
He's telling you he thinks he needs, you need relief.
Correct.
And he says that and your presentation would seem to justify the relief you're asking for. So it's real simple, just submit a landscape plan and ask that that relief be granted. That's just that simple. We don't need to argue about it tonight. But I do want to emphasize, you've done a fabulous job in presenting tonight. Now, does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? Please come to the microphone. Let's hear what you got to say. Seeing none, does anybody care to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the microphone. Seeing, we now, is there anybody in our Zoom audience that might like to speak in favor or against this petition?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And so now we're gonna close it to public input, open it up to board discussion and deliberations. How do y'all feel about my suggestion of what I'd like to see before this could be approved by me, anyway?
Fine.
Yeah? All right, so does anyone want to make a motion to continue this?
I'm moved.
And that's something certainly you have no problem with, right?
Well, I have a problem with it, but I can't say anything, so I'm gonna be sure. No, I have no problem with it. When is your next meeting, though?
October 10th.
October 10th?
October 10th. Yeah, I'll have to be in a hotel room by six, but I'll get, I'll get there.
Mr. Chairman, I just, this is Jay. I'm just thinking that the three things that he's identified as needing relief for are listed on the zoning, but I understand you'd also like to pick on the.
I really would. I'm not inclined to vote in favor of this this evening. And I think that Mr. Martin's concerns about removal of in-lot trees should be taken very seriously and that relief should be asked for because in his opinion, and he certainly is a champion of this over the years, in-lot trees should never be removed, but he may give consideration to this, as said, it's all.
Well, but it has been requested.
It would be buffer trees. It also looks like there are buffer trees on at least the easterly boundary.
And there's no backdoor neighbors.
Those aren't being shown. There's a notation on there, but, but they're not being shown. All we're seeing is new trees seeming to go in there. And actually, if you save what's there, it's cheaper.
Anyone want to make a motion concerning this petition?
Both sides. Actually, both sides of the property have trees.
Did somebody say something about a motion?
I think there was one.
You did.
I did not.
Oh, I said so moved.
Oh, okay, Mr. Martin moves to continue to 1010.
That was Mr. Frapery.
Who said that?
I did, Frank. I mean, Jay, Jay.
Okay, and you did that as a second?
Yes.
Thank you, Jay. All right, did the board care to have any discussion on this before moving into a vote?
So, Mr. Chairman, just, if I may, just for clarification to the petition, just so we're all on the same page, you want a specific list of the relief requested laid right out. You want a, you want a landscape plan, a detailed landscape plan, and we have to address the question of the elimination of in-lot trees in the rear of the property. Is that correct?
Yeah, I thought there was one more.
In addition, he also asked for a colored elevation showing the signs on the front of the building.
Just show me a depiction of the signs as it will look. You know, when you start talking about, you've raised the roof line, I get it. You want to break up that long roof line. That's great. And it's a great idea. It's also very modest, if you ask me. And I think there'll be no problem with us considering that. But I need to see things visually. I'm one of those people that really wants to see what I'm being asked to do. What was that restaurant that was there before?
Somersault.
On this lot?
Teddy's Place across the street.
There's an old cottage calling, I think, way back, maybe?
No, maybe it's next door, I don't know, but I do remember there being a nightclub there, rather, next door. It was one of those great places that back in the 80s, you could, at 18, stop and go in, you know? I shouldn't admit that, but hey, whatever.
Statute of limitations might have run on that.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. My parents are dead, so I can't get in trouble there. All right. So let's do a roll call. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Jay.
Jay.
I said aye. Can you hear me?
Yeah, he said aye.
We can now.
It's aye? Okay. All right, Mr. Igo?
Aye.
All right, I'm an aye, so we'll see you 1010.
Thank you.
Mr. Singer, if you can just.
We, again, we just love seeing you. Sure. Your principal is so well-equipped with dealing with these sorts of questions.
Thank you.
I need a five-minute recess, please. Okay? May we do that?
Sure, we take five minutes and come back.
Five-minute recess, please?
Sure.
I'm getting to be an old guy.
Join the club.
Does she know I'm here?
All right, so I'll carry the phone.
Does she know I'm here? Oh, yeah. Yeah, she's okay.
I don't think your mics are off, so just keep that in mind.
I was just letting you know I'm moving.
This is a good time to move, Jay, while the chairman is out of the room.
That's what I figured.
Where you been?
No naps.
No naps?
No naps.
Could probably use one. So the next one's withdrawn, right?
Yeah.
Again.
Again?
Yeah.
Does not sound good.
It does not. Just have to make it.
That's why I'm wearing a mask.
Few more hours.
Found another folder there, you see?
I'm sorry?
I found another folder there, you see? They're all rambling around in my car.
Okay.
There's another gray folder there. Sorry and thank you.
Bladder shrinking. Blood is shrinking. Turn the camera.
No comment.
All right.
Mr. Frapery, are you able to get back on?
He isn't back on?
I'm back.
Oh, good, good. Mr. Igo?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. All right, so let's go back to the agenda, please, and I want to thank everybody for your patience with me. The next matter is that of. Janice O'Reilly, trustee of 71 Acres Avenue Realty Trust, that property being located at 71 Acres Ave, in West Yarmouth property in a.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
R25.
I think.
We don't seem to have.
We're on number 5132.
Am I looking at the wrong one?
I think the.
Too many papers.
811 Route 28 is withdrawing again.
Yeah, but I think we have to act on it.
I'd be glad motion to allow it.
I'm sorry, Jay, hang on a second. The chairman hasn't read it in.
To the public. So, it's petition 5132, Rose Anna Nicolaitis, trustee of the Ponco Realty Trust, under date of trust of July 2595, in care of Christina Megason. Property is located at 811 Route 28 South Yarmouth and the petitioner had sought relief pursuant to the rights appended to zoning districts B2, HMO D1 and VC2. Specifically, the applicant was seeking a special permit pursuant to 4.14, .8, .9, .4, sub-paragraph D, to allow the relief from the Yarmouth Architectural and Site Design Standards, Section 10, and to allow the existing overhead electric power source to remain in order to develop eight one-bedroom apartments. Attorney Paul Toddif has represented this petition when it's come before us and at least is representing them now and indicates that on behalf of his client, he wishes to have the petition withdrawn. Is someone prepared to make a motion to withdraw it?
Sure.
Still moved, without prejudice.
Mr. Martin moves.
I think I was.
Mr. Igo?
Sean.
Oh, Mr. Igo moved. I'm sorry, Sean.
A second though.
Okay.
I was doing my Dick Martin impression. Did you?
You sounded just like him.
That's too bad for you.
I withdrawn, yeah. Okay. Yeah, just a second. What's there again, 24?
26.
26. Okay. On that, let's just do it by roll call very quickly, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Doherty? Ms. Murphy, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You don't look like a Doherty, though. I apologize.
No, I'm a Murphy all the way. Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
And I'm an aye carries unanimously. I'll give the file to you before we leave. The next item is that of Rose Venery, property located at 17 Allison Lane, West Yarmouth Ave, that property being in a zoning district B R25. The applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, sub-paragraph 2 of our zoning bylaws, or in the alternative variance pursuant to 203.5, for side and rear setback relief to build an eight-by-twenty shed. The applicant requests a waiver from the requirement of a certified plot plan less than two years old. Okay, who's here for this?
I am. Rose Venery, hello.
Okay, why don't you tell us all about it?
Well, my grandson started up a little handyman landscaping, masonry little business, and he was using my sheds and he said, Nan, I'm gonna build a shed in the back of the house. I own 18 and 17. I said, oh, good idea. Okay, I helped him pay for it and he built it. And he built it too big. We measured it. I went over there myself. I measured it. He is eight feet from, the property is, it abuts two corner lots. Our property abuts two corner lots. So the shed would be here. This guy's house is over there on Anastasia, I think it is. This guy's house faces Allison and then there's our property and another property behind us on Anastasia. And I measured it and it came to, I measured it, nobody else did. It was five feet from the rear, eight feet from the side and 30 or more from the front of the house. They're small lots. They're 10,000 square foot lots. So, the shed itself is 30 or 40 feet from each one of the houses. And the property lines are pretty much 25 or 30 feet from their house to the fence. The guy next door, we kind of got friendly with them, he has some renters there. And they were sighted for different trailers and stuff, as were we, we were too. And they built from our fence toward Leonard and on Allison, a corral as big as this to bring in all their trailers and trucks. And then they closed the gates. So, I said to Dom, "That's kind of a good idea. You know, build a shed, and then you can back your trailers and everything right back in and keep all your junk in the back." Right now, it's kind of like strewn around, but I, he needs this shed. I need this shed, so I don't have to look at his wonderful array of junk.
Okay. Pretty much explains it, huh? Board members might have some questions, of course. And so, Mr. Igo, any questions about a petition?
Uh, yes, so your son is running a business on this property, is that what you're telling us?
Not really running a business on his property, he lives there.
Well, what type of a business is he in?
He gets in his truck and he goes to customers like other guys on the Cape.
What type of a business is he in?
He is in cutting grass, mason work once in a while for people. He doesn't have anyone coming to the house. Not even any help. Because I remember that back where I came from, couldn't do that.
Okay. Um, I have in front of me a letter dated January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. Addressed to you, second notice about debris in your yard. Has that been addressed yet?
A little by little, yeah, we're getting there. Not quite there, as I said, I really need him to get his stuff off of his trailers and put away and that kind of stuff. And if we could do that, then he knows he doesn't have any choice.
Well, the letter that I'm referring to talks about trash, trash cans.
Yeah, oh, that's all done, yeah.
That's all done, so we had an inspector go by there, they'd report back to us that this is in compliance with the sanitation code?
Yes.
Okay. And you don't have a plot plan for this? It's eight, what size is this shed?
Eight by twenty.
No, it's sixteen by twenty.
It's sixteen by twenty.
It was fine before he went and put a little addition on it.
Okay, well, your application says eight by twenty on it, do we hear that? Who took the measurement of the shed?
I did.
Okay. I'm.
It's eight feet from the prop, the side property line.
Yeah, Mr., that's all I have for now. I will say, Mr. Chairman, that I would not be prepared vote favorably on this petition until that issue on the debris is satisfied with the ultimate. But I'll let others speak, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frapery.
All right, I did have a couple of questions. First of all, I drove by today, and there were like three or four trucks in the, in the front yard, in the driveway, as well as more in the road. Kind of blocking the road, and they were fully, full of equipment.
Right.
It doesn't, it didn't look like anybody was living in the residence, it looks like it's being used as a business. And the front yard was full of debris, so I, I would want a plot plan, a legitimate plot plan, I just want to see the whole place cleaned up and.
I do, too.
I think the bigger question is whether or not it's being used as a business.
No.
Certainly looks like it, but I don't have any questions.
Go ahead, Jay.
I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't have any questions, I just really question whether it's being used as a business.
Okay, Barbara?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Jay, and I'm very concerned with the appearance of the lot. Especially to your neighbors. So, I think we need some verification that that's been cleaned up, and it's not the case that it's become an ice sort of the neighborhood.
I know, it's a beautiful neighborhood. And he just started this, you know, a couple of years. And the guys next door have a business they're running behind those gates, every morning at quarter to seven, three or four trucks start up, and they pull out huge, big, black trailers, and off they go, and
Unfortunately, we're.
Workers come and park their cars.
We're only dealing with your piece of property.
I know, but what happens?
They should get after him, too.
Yep.
I don't want to do that, because everybody, you know, my grandson said, "Nan, this is what it takes to live on Cape Cod. What we have to do to make money to be able to live here." I said, "I know, Dominic, but you have to clean up your messes, I can't."
Mr. Martin.
It's not like a business, business.
Yeah, I mean, with all due.
It's not like Witten.
Yeah, all due respect, I, I understand your, where you're coming from, and I understand the hardship that it may imply, but I did also drive by, and both seventeen and eighteen Allison are they don't look good. There's an awful lot of mess throughout both properties. And, you know, and we have to look at it as, well, what's fair, you know? Yeah, we can understand that somebody wants to run a business or be able to do part of their business, so to speak, from there, but it's not fair to the, to the neighbors and people selling their properties, or whatever the case may be, as to as to what the neighborhood looks like in general. So, I would also concur that I'd, I'd want to see, see the property cleaned up. It's, apparently, we're not maybe asking for the right-sized square footage in the shed. As soon as you're within six, you know, if it was under a hundred square feet, then you'd, then you'd be all right with the six feet from the line. But because it's bigger, you have to abide by the setback requirements. And so, that hasn't been done, so I think it's both the placement, well, the placement of the shed's gonna need relief. And I think it needs to be applied for correctly if it's bigger than what we're looking at here.
Well, first of all, the petition apparently is wrongly states the relief that is being sought.
Yep.
So, we couldn't, if we, if we acted on this, it's going to be in denial. I can tell you that right now. Okay, because the petition isn't properly drafted. It's not a rocket science to do it, we encourage you to try to work to have it done. But we need accurate measurements, you know? And we need to see where it is on the ground in terms of linear feet, including inches. Not a maybe, not a guess, but where it actually is, okay? And that's a difficult thing to do, we understand, but, you know, do the best you can to get us an actual measurement. Now, you don't have to have us do that, I tell you that. You can say, "I want you to vote on this tonight." And you'd need at least a four in favor and zero, a four in favor, okay? And one against would be the minimum vote. And Mr. Igo's already said he's not gonna vote in favor, and I'm already saying I'm not gonna vote in favor. So, as a consequence, instead of, if that were to happen, you wouldn't be able to reapply before this board for one year. And so, what we're saying to you is this. If you wish to continue this hearing, so that you can submit an amended petition and proper, something, particularly photos, they say, they tell a thousand words, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. But the fact that your neighbor is violating any aspect of our law in the town of Yarmouth is of no consequence to your petition, none.
No.
We don't give relief because the guy next door is violating the law.
I know.
Okay? That's not, not what we do. And so, if you want us to do that, to continue it, we're happy to do that as an accommodation to you. Because if you don't, and we're forced to vote on it tonight, alternatively, you could say, "I'd like to have it withdrawn without prejudice." And I don't know, I think I'm, I would vote in favor of that, Mr. Igo wouldn't. The other four, three members would, then you'd have it withdrawn, so that you wouldn't be under any obligation to provide us anything. But you'd still be in violation and continue to receive monetary fines for your violation. So, I respectfully suggest to you that it might be in your benefit to ask to continue this while you get just those couple of things together and present them back to us. Got to be from you, though. Would you like to continue it?
I have, I have to continue it.
Okay, so, anybody prepared to make a motion to continue this petition? Please, someone?
Uh, so moved.
Mr. Martin, thank you, and who's the second? Thank you, Barbara. And so, I saw her raise her hand. And so, what's the next day we could put this on?
It would be October twenty-fourth.
You available October twenty-four?
Maybe.
Well, if you're not, then we'll just take it off the list and dismiss it.
I think, I think we should have a discussion before we move on this. Uh, what, first off, the petitioner hasn't given us any indication as to what she's going to achieve between now and the continuance. I'd like to know what she's gonna do, and we ask her if she's available, and she says maybe. I, I don't want to waste the board's time for her to come back and tell us what happened on the, on the lot next door.
Yep.
Okay, so I, I'm not inclined to vote in favor of a continuance of this matter until there's some good-faith representation by the petitioner that she's going to do what she needs to do to accomplish what she needs to do. And that is a certified plot plan where this building is located, and it needs to be properly I guess she's asked for the proper relief, she's asked for that from permit and variance, so.
I also want to see photographs of the site.
Well, she needs to see, there's a lot of stuff there. And the fact that she's still in violation with all of this stuff laying around, and I'm told that her grandson is storing all his tools inside, well, they're running a business out of this. So, I think what we should ask is, we should ask the chief zoning enforcement officer to make an inspection of this property, so we can be better informed as well.
All right. So, I, I guess I'm not certain what we're asking her to do, but I will agree to anything that moves this along to a conclusion this evening, because.
Well, I'm more than happy to get to vote in favor of a continuance, but what are we continuing it for?
Uh, for her to present to us how she's going to remedy the violation noted by our building commissioner. And to provide us a certified plot plan, or at least something from an engineer. Showing us the accurate dimensions of the building and distance from any side of butting line. And again, I've asked for pictures. So, those are the three things I'm asking for. An amended petition, photographs, and a certified plot plan. And again, it's up, we can make as conditions that any approval is subject to her coming into compliance with all bylaws. You know?
Well, right now, she's in violation of the sanitation code.
That whole area is in violation of the sanitation code. At least her, at least her property in the abutter.
Well, I don't know about the abutter, I can't speak to the abutter, because I don't have that violation notice, I do have hers.
Well, that's a good point, we don't have any violation notice for that property, but it certainly looks like it would be in violation if inspected. So, what do you want to do? There's a motion, a second, and what are we doing?
Okay, no, I'll go along with it, but if she comes back and she has nothing, we're, we can just take a vote on that, but she should be aware that she's right now subject to two hundred dollars a day for the violation of the sanitation code, and three hundred dollars a day for violation of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, and that's between her and them, not us.
Pardon me?
Any fines, fees are between the petitioner and the, and the finding authority.
She, she should understand that, it's not that we're gonna impose the fines, but she's not, she's still subject to those.
Yep, I got it clear, clearly, do you? Okay. So, you know, I don't have any sympathy for this, it's self-imposed.
I'm, I'm happy to vote in favor of the continuance, just as long as we're all on the same page.
And I'm gonna do a roll call vote, please, Mr. Martin?
Uh, aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Jay?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, carries unanimously, five-oh vote on roll call. The matter is continued until October twenty-four?
Ms. Venary, I need you to sign an extension agreement.
Sign a extension agreement, yeah?
Thank you.
I'd be in the hospital that night with my wife's first grandchild.
Oh, wow.
Very close to that.
That'd be nice.
Take it as.
Venary, you need to date it as well.
That's right.
It's nine-twenty-six.
Okay, so we have, I guess, just minutes. Let's go to the minutes, does anybody care to, have any comment on them? Have you all reviewed them? Yep, yep.
Yep. Take a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Is there a second?
I believe that was Jay, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was Jay.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. So, let's go forward with a roll call on it. Do we approve these? The motion is to approve them, it's been properly seconded, and.
These are the minutes, man, this is not you.
Aye.
Aye.
And, Mr. Igo?
Aye.
All right, so that carries five-oh. There is nothing but an adjournment now, so somebody move adjourn, to adjourn, and we shall.
Move to adjourn.
Second.